City.
Oh, yeah. Today?
Yeah.
And this thing.
I don't know the full details. For awhile, they said he's been critical in surgery and stuff, but they said he's passed away, so, but he was saying there was three assailants.
You can't sit here.
I heard it on the news on ninety-six point three, so I don't know.
It was probably the AP, top of the hour that feeds in.
Yeah, so I was hearing.
It was all over the television.
I've been in front of the TV since last one.
Good little holes.
I don't think so. I'm going, hey, Ryan, let me see what for Ryan. Ryan says it's coming. I'm going with for Ryan.
We'll call tonight the Lloyd City Council meeting to order. Mandy, would you take a roll call, please?
Kent Miller?
Present.
Raymond Pato?
Present.
Matt Adi?
Here.
Lee McMillan?
Here.
Tony Gignler?
Yes.
Andrew Graybon?
Present.
Lynn Latrell?
Present.
Thank you very much. You'll stand for the invocation of the pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, please put your hand and protect our law enforcement officers here in our community and all across the nation with the, with what's going on right now and the danger that they're, they're under out there, and they're also trying to do is their job to protect us, so be with them and protect them and be with our community as we keep moving forward and we could use some much-needed rain and get us through this hot spell, and again, thank you for the blessings that you bestow on our community, in your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to bring up a subject that I'm gonna hand it off to council with Panto about the issues of dogs at large that we continue to have. There's been some more incidents in, within the community, and it seems like the problem's not getting any better, and Raymond wanted to visit with me about it today, and I told him, let him have it for.
It's in my lap now, huh? Okay. Well, since I have been on the council since May, there have been three instances now, two bites and one very close call, and I think we need to do something, if there's a city ordinance that says the dogs are at large and that something needs to be done about the dogs at large, then yes, I say just add, we put our foot down and do something about that. It's not the animals that are at fault, it's the pet owners, and as such, if your dog is riding around and, then you might have to face a stiff penalty. I don't think that our women and children, or even us old men walking or jogging should have to carry a can of mace or a gun or a stick along to protect themselves from the dogs. Now, there's also the issue of the people who get up at four-thirty, five o'clock in the morning and let their dogs run loose. There is a big black Labrador that visits me regularly and leaves his calling card in my backyard, and I faithfully clean it up, but, you know, here again, you know, these people need to be held responsible for their animals.
I agree.
Okay.
Anything else, Randy?
Yes, also, well, I got a floor. One of my constituents called me and said that he had taken his grandchildren, or his wife had taken his grandchildren up the West Side Park, and the restrooms are closed and locked, and there was no water, and so I got hold of Lynn Miller, and she said that there has been, they can't keep it, they can't keep it fixed up as fast as they're breaking it and smearing feces all over the walls, and I, I don't know of a police presence, I don't think we can hire enough policemen, you know, we can't have a policeman just watching West Side Park all the time, but maybe if we had a neighborhood watch program set up where you see something going on, tell somebody about it, and let's get this thing stopped right now. That's all I have, just a minute.
Thank you. That's a good comment.
There was some talk about, not too long ago, about having cameras up there in that park to keep watch over it because vandalism happened, playground equipment, and.
Well, I've, I've.
Don't know where that's at either.
I've confronted some people who, instead of parking in a parking lot, jump over the curb and have their vehicles, and I kind of let my alligator mouth over the road by anyway, and I said, if you guys need the exercise, why don't you park your cars in the parking lot and walk over here? And at that point in time, I thought, but you've said just about enough, you better go, like, you still got all your hide, so, but, you know, and I don't think, and I know it's not children that's doing that. I, I have no idea who it is, or, and I'm not gonna start pointing fingers at anybody, but it's, we need to find an answer, we need to get this thing stopped.
Butch, have those three instances that you were talking about, did those people turn that in to either the police department or to Chris on the dogs?
I just happened to talk to, um, all right, Clem.
Carol.
Carol Clem this afternoon at the blood drive, and she said, yes, they turned it in, and said the owner was standing right there, she said, what, what would have happened if I would have been pushing my, one of my grandchildren?
Yeah.
You know, in a struggle. And Charles, his wife got bit, and then they were also semi-attacked by dogs, so, and I, I don't know what happened, I didn't, I haven't seen a police report or anything like that, and.
Those two dogs in that one incident you just talked about, they were removed?
Okay.
I know, I know that, I'm pretty sure they were.
Lynn, did you have anything to add or retract from, did I misquote you properly? Okay.
Okay. Thank you, man.
You're welcome.
Lee?
I'm in.
Okay, thank you. Tony? Andrew?
I received a complaint from a constituent regarding hazardous living conditions in rental property, and I've been trying to find out if, you know, what information do we have rules regulating rental property conditions, I mean, I don't know if you have any information on that, or if Katie would.
Well, after you called me, I, what I did learn is there has been effort in the past to create ordinances to deal with problems of rental property. At one point, I understood it was very close to success, and then the council did not approve it, because apparently there were people who own property that didn't want to see that happen, and I, that's what I was told. There's, there are standard rules available, the Kansas League of Minutes values is made available for cities without ordinances to do inspections on rental property. Now, you will have a note concerning the legislature's action this year, and you will see in those, in those notes that they took efforts this year to limit cities' abilities to try to regulate bad conditions on property. I haven't seen that state statute yet, but it seems like everything is against the person who has a limited income and needs a place to live, but I, as you can see, Katie is not with us tonight, but certainly like to have her look at this issue and give you some options on what could be done to address that kind of problem.
Go ahead, Bud. I thought we established a ordinance to deal with properties, I registered mine at least twice or three times, and it just for them to inspect them.
I thought we had registration, but we really didn't have the inspection.
We dropped the fee.
Or, dropped the fee.
But, you know, I, I agree with Kent wholeheartedly, we need to have something on this, but the thing is, when it comes to the process of the city council, the renters don't show up for whatever reason, but landlords do, and they show up in force, and they will fill the room, they will make their arrangements work out.
Well, I'm hearing about complaints about mold, about people, the floor, literally falling through the floor, the only thing holding the floor together is carpeting, powdered foundations to a property, and that, to me, is unacceptable, yet that's being allowed to be rented in our city limits, and in my mind, the city council's job is to protect the citizens in some respects and to regulate. I mean, will we allow our roads, or, you know, to go that way, we regulate brand-new construction, right? We have a set of rules and regulations about how those needs to be constructed, and we regulate how many feet someone can build their porch to a sidewalk or to the city, to the street center. You'd think we would also have regulations about a certain standard of living being met inside of a building, so I, that's, you know, I just, I mean, it's the only option I have to tell my constituents, you have to hire a lawyer and take your landlord to court if your landlord isn't doing anything about it.
Or buy your place to.
Well, that's it, I, I'll take the devil's advocate here, you know, as Matt alluded to, you don't like where you're living, go find someplace else.
But unfortunately, sometimes they can't afford.
That's, that's exactly right.
And then what if the landlord then just turns around and rents it to the next person who has a, I mean, if somebody gets hurt in a property, does the city have any responsibility if we don't regulate it? I'm just asking.
Probably not.
There's a moral respond to both of your citizens.
You'd have a lot more problem if you had regulations in enforcement.
That's something that we can read.
I hundred percent support you, if we get something going on, I would go with you on that.
I would too.
Well, let's, let's resurrect that and bring it back and see what we need to do, because we definitely got to protect the people, the rent, the people who are renting, and unfortunately, sometimes it is the lower income, and because, you know, normally anybody else, if you can afford kids, like, man, I'm out of here, but I understand that they don't have the money.
Well, and even if the, even if the landlords did come, or the property owners did come, I think we as the city council could speak longer and louder by our vote than they can.
Glad you're on our side.
More crap down.
Butch, I, on my, on my part before, I'd like to say, we, I was on this, the Humane Society back when we were looking at this animal shelter thing before, and the problem, everybody agrees there's a dog problem. I completely agree, my nieces almost got bit by a big dog, made me very, very angry, and several friends of mine have been there. It comes down to, we don't have an impound facility that's willing to put down animals. Dr. Luke is not going to put down his customers' pets, you know, unless they want to, you know, he's, he's not a kill facility, and, and, and we don't have a facility that's just gonna warehouse these animals indefinitely, so if you're gonna have a non-kill facility, you gotta give them a dog, you know, a brief life as dogs.
Well, or if that dog, if that dog is taken there and it's my dog, and it's slapped me on the back of the hand, and it says, okay, Mr. Pato, that just cost you seventy-five dollars, and the next time it's a hundred fifty.
They deny ownership, and since they didn't have a tag, how do you prove this dog is theirs?
I think when they have seventy-something, they'll.
Yeah, I mean, how do you, how do you prove ownership if people aren't getting a license? Now, if they've got a tag.
You gotta get a license, it's city ordinance. You can't.
I'm sorry. We're kind of in a work session. That's, that's, that's the reason this problem continues, is because we don't really have a good enforcement mechanism, and it's gonna cost us, in the neighborhood of a million dollars, to build a facility of our own to make it happen, and then you gotta, then you gotta staff it ongoing, you know, so, that's, that's a big problem that we gotta figure out.
Okay.
Good thing. I'm done.
Lloyd?
Uh, as I say, as I go on the first three issues, and.
Well, I think we're definitely in agreeance on a lot of that, and I think with Jay's leadership, he can help us through some of this.
You have some good work session items that have been discussed here.
Yeah.
We'll get him on the work session, we gotta get a lot of stuff before Jay's. So, thank you. Matt?
I, I, I think, I agree with everybody else on this, we got to protect everybody in the community, whether they're, or whether, you know, I think, you know, you guys made some good points, Andrew, on what we need to do, and we've always known that, that it's, you know, we, you get a lot of pressure from the people who don't want to be regulated, and understand that nobody wants to be regulated, that all of those in business, of us, of us that are in business, we're regulated, we understand that, so it's just part of it, so we need to proceed with that in a work session.
Next item is staff reports, Katie's not here this evening, and so we'll turn it back to Jay.
Okay, well, I, I probably have more items there than you want to hear, but I want to give a report on the water treatment plan study. You know, several weeks ago, we met with Water, Rural Water Districts Two and Three, and the engineers, to talk about participation of those water districts. Well, we have received a response from Rural Water Three saying they do want to participate, and we will be preparing an agreement between the city and that water district to grant to you, formalize that process, so I, I personally thought that was good news, because it indicates that going to cooperate, that has a broader benefit. So, want to give you a quick update on the city administrator research, search process. I guess you have, Mandy has already sent you a copy of information concerning that. There are sixteen applicants for the position, and ten of those have met the minimum qualifications. Now, those minimum qualifications are the qualifications you set, after meeting with her, you determined what you wanted to see in an applicant, so they have met, ten of those have met qualifications. She is gonna be doing some background work, but I think we're at a point now where it's going to be necessary to sit down with you and Myra Flinji to go over those resumes, and she would like to meet with you on the twenty-sixth, which is next Tuesday, for a special meeting, and if possible, it will be an executive session, because it's a matter of personnel discussions, and if there's a possibility of doing that at five o'clock, because there will be a number of resumes to go over, five o'clock or shortly thereafter for a special meeting, and so I need to know from you whether that, that will be possible.
Does that work for you, Andrew?
I think it works for everybody.
Five fifteen?
Five fifteen.
We go for five fifteen?
We can probably make that work.
Fifteen, five fifteen.
My day's at five thirty, but we can probably.
Oh. We'll shoot for five fifteen if we can do it then.
He goes for five thirty, so.
It'll be all right, we just.
Okay, five o'clock.
You just may have to work.
Okay.
All right, we'll go for five.
Get it right by then.
Send down your mail.
Yeah, I'll send it in.
At next meeting, at the next regular meeting on August second, we will be bringing the plans for East Main Street to you for review, pretty much for a final review, for your review, I determine, then at that point to move on to bid, because, so that project is rolling right along. Lynn contacted me about Tree City USA conference here, state conference, and I, I've asked Lynn to join us this evening and give you a little information on that, and.
Um, every year.
It's not something that needs formal action, by the way, but it's something I think you should be aware of, and it's a good opportunity for the city.
Okay, every year, the State Forestry Department recognizes the cities who've been Tree City USAs, and Beloit will be Tree City USA for forty years in two thousand seventeen, and so the tree board would like to have the program here in Beloit at that particular time, and so they have made a proposal, and Lloyd Bugate is our chairman of the committee, and we have gotten a proposal together, and we would like to propose it to the state forester, which is Tim McDonald right now, because our district forester has moved on, and so we would like to make this as a proposal, we don't know whether we'll be accepted or not, but it's an opportunity that we would have about a hundred to a hundred and twenty people coming to town. It's a two-day program, the first day's only half a day, and they would tour a facility, and we have talked to, can I tell them? Okay, Adrian Meyer, and he has said that we could use his park as a tour ground for that. We've also looked into maybe redoing our walking brochure that has the trees and giving that to people. We've talked to the Christian church, and they would allow it to do the program there because it has that nice facility, and so we've kind of worked everything out, if it's okay with you guys.
Bill.
And like I said, it's just a proposal, and.
And that you know what time of year.
Yes, it's the last week in March generally, and they have not set the date yet, so that's, it's always the last week in March unless something comes up, yeah.
And it won't cost the city anything, because they pay, they pay for the food and all the, everything, and the churches, we could use the church facilities without any, without having to pay for them, and.
Pardon? Is it one day of it?
It's a day and a half, yeah, and they bring in speakers, and so that's all arranged through the State Forestry Department, we don't have to do that, but they'll bring in speakers, and generally, speakers are awesome, I mean, if you like trees, you might come, because it's really awesome, yeah.
What, what's the timeframe if we were to approve that East Main Street project? What would be the timeframe when that construction was started?
Well.
I mean, I guess.
People coming in.
Yeah.
Well, I know that, what I'm saying.
I've been talking with Stuart Potter about that very issue. I think probably, in this old knee-jerk occurrence, when you were talking about the plans, and Wendy's here, next meeting, that we're talking about construction of the storm center, getting that all finished before winter, trying to do those things that keep the street open, and it would probably then be February here, so it'll be construction time, frankly, when that happens.
I mean, I think it's great, I, I think we need to go ahead and pursue it, and we'll assist you any way we can.
It's an opportunity, I mean, you know, to bring people in.
Sure.
I've talked to Heather Hartman, and she and the chamber's gonna help us get goody-bags together, and, you know, we'll try to do it right, if we're gonna do it, we want to do it right. And while I got your attention, I was gonna let you guys know, I am going to apply for a grant through the Solomon Valley Community Foundation to start working on the north side of the walking bridge. We've, there's a temporary ADA ramp right there now, we've got to put in a permanent ADA ramp at that particular point, but if you've ever been down there, the landscaping is not very inviting, and so I've asked Jesse Benedict to take a look at that, and he's gonna get me a proposal together, I'm gonna put it through the grant to see if we can landscape that a little bit and make it look a little more inviting. Now, I will let you know, Jesse has some big plans. And, you know, surely, anyway, which is exciting, I mean, you know, it's exciting, but we're only looking at doing around the north side of the bridge, or, you know, the walk bridge at this time, I mean, that's, we've got to start and do it phase by phase and see what's going on and see, I have contacted the wear group, that's one of their big projects, too, is to make it accessible, you know, walk-through, and they're very supportive of it, but I wanted you guys to know I was gonna apply for a grant. Of course, again, I don't know whether I'll get it, I'm just gonna try it.
Nothing ventured, nothing beaten.
Do you know how far from the side mark curb north is city property, and how much is private?
Um, I believe at the Bloss building, it kind of goes out to the middle of the street, or that path, which is not a street, it's just.
Next.
Yeah, well, it's not even next, it's actually more his property, and Chris is getting me a GPA map of it, but I don't have it yet.
How about lighting down there?
There are lights, yeah.
I know I had someone mention the other day about if the city had ever looked at possibly closing that bridge just for safety reasons of people doing something crazy off the edge of it.
Oh.
It's already been done.
And, you know, I, I guess just, every year, we replace planks on that bridge, and a lot of people say we don't do anything, and we really do. The planks are very expensive, and so about, almost six hundred dollars is what we spend a year to replace planks, and then we move them up, and, and so it is, we do take.
Sure. Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you, Lynn.
Jay, did you have a comment on the leadership that you're planning?
Yes. They're wanting, they're wanting to visit with you, they'll be here at next meeting to talk about where they are, they've been discussing what they hope will be positive suggestions to the city council about the future city government, the political organization of the council, the organizational structure of the city, and the administration of it. They've been working on this for some time, so they would like to come to your work session at, you know, the second meeting, to talk about those issues and share some ideas. John Devine, who you all know apparently, will be here at that time, and then on the fourth, they are wanting to conduct a public forum to talk about some of those issues after they meet with you, and John Devine, once again, will be at that forum to talk about some of the policy aspects of city government and citizens' role in that whole process. They're very upbeat in policy, I'll say that, and, and as kind of a side note, they have also commented on the leadership they are seeing currently from the city council, so that's from that, not from me, and I think you're all doing great, too, but they are very complimentary of the way they see things, so, that's just kind of a heads up, and I think it should be a policy kind of discussion.
Anything else, Jay?
No, I think I've said enough.
Okay, thank you very much. We have a public comment this evening, on the, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda for the July fifth council meeting in the minutes of appropriation seven B. So moved? Been moved to approve the consent agenda and appropriation seven B, I have a friend, Councilman Graybon, go up a second.
I'll second that.
Second by Councilman McMillan. Any further discussion? Go for the discussion, Mandy, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Pato?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Latrell?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Adi?
Yes.
Graybon?
Yes.
Gignler?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is ordinance twenty-one eighty-nine, stop signs on the north campus. Okay. We had numerous stop signs, and also to make it a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit is part of the discussion.
My question is, why twenty-five on most residential areas? There is a.
I have the same question. Jake can answer that.
There's nothing in the ordinance about making it twenty-five, I think we need to come back to standard traffic. There's nothing in the ordinance about making it twenty-five. Uh, I think we need to come back to standard traffic ordinance from, uh, statutorily sets thirty miles as, uh, as, as a speed limit unless otherwise revised by approval of the city council. So, uh, at this point, uh, while the twenty-five mile an hour speed limit might be appropriate, uh, we'd have to come back to separate ordinance on this. This particular organ just covers the, uh, the location stop sign.
Was there a rationale for the twenty-five as opposed to thirty? Was there a reason to that lower speed?
No reason was given to me. That's reading this now here.
Mike, Mike made a statement on why they wanted twenty-five, but I don't remember what the reason is.
Yeah.
He and Dave, when Dave was passing through here, that, uh, but that's a-